If I may, I would like to address a couple of the issues that were raised during the initial public comment. When it comes to training and the money to train, I will say this as far as moving it around. We obviously can use funds that we have from seizures. There's also grant funding available to us for training. And we also, especially during COVID-19, take advantage of online training. That's offered through municipal association, or through the Criminal Justice Academy, through Akatus, web-based program, and also Police One. And we cover everything from de-escalation, procedural justice, domestic violence, you name it. The training that's available to us is pretty tremendous online. And also, we try to be as frugal as we can with the money by sending people off to train the trainer courses, or to bring a trainer here and have other municipalities or the sheriff's department go forward, assist them perhaps in calls where this one person can train a lot of us in a topic. So, training is something we're very keen on, and that we do a great deal of, and we have gotten pretty creative with tight budgets to be able to make sure that our personnel are receiving the best training possible. Second thing I'd like to mention that was brought up was about the citizen review board. I will just say this briefly, that we have two entities in our city that are made up of citizens that are involved in incidents involving the police, and our policies and our procedure, as well as the discipline of officers. One of them is the Civil Service Commission, which is involved in the hiring process and also any discipline that an officer may receive from an incident that will arise from their conduct with the citizenry. And there's also the Public Safety Committee, again, which is made up of civilians who we meet with on a monthly basis, and we discuss with them. We have our Internal Affairs or Office of Professional Assistance representative go over every complaint that we've had in the city with that particular group. And they have the opportunity to ask questions, get clarity, and provide feedback to us regarding those investigations. So whereas we do not have a citizen review board per se between these two entities, they serve that function. But with that being said, being an organization that accepts this responsibility, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, we welcome transparency and review. And if that is something that the city wishes to pursue, we would not be opposed to it. But by the same token, redundancy may not be necessary. And I can assure you that we police ourselves probably as well as most, but I do think it is important that we have civilian oversight and engagement. So we do welcome that a great deal. But internally, I will say this, to let you know that your dollars spent on a body worn camera works for us when it comes to review. Because I think one gentleman mentioned about hiring good people, and that is one of the most important things we try to do. And I would say during our hiring of people, we do extensive background checks, polygraphs, and psychological testing, which we've done for decades in most agencies. Well, it was just two years ago that state mandated the psychologicals be given. Well, as I said, we have been doing it now for several decades. But also, with the body worn camera, I will say that we review those. The supervisory oversight is extremely important. We hire, we retain, we train, but we must have supervisory oversight. And a piece of that oversight is the review of body worn camera footage. And we have identified training needs on the part of some of our personnel. We've been able to applaud them for jobs well done, and we've also found misconduct behavior that was not becoming them to our agency, and it has led to remedial training, discipline, up to and including termination. So we are very active in trying to make sure that the service that we provide is second to none. And so I think I've addressed the three things that I heard early on, and now I'll get into the presentation.
Before you go there, Chief, can I ask, when exactly does the body worn camera comes on?
Well, it can be turned on manually, but also if you were to draw your taser, it will cut it on. We're also pursuing, everything has a cost, but also looking at purchasing what's called Axon Signal, which is a, when you draw your weapon from your holster, that it will also activate your body worn camera as well as those around you. But there is a cost. But to me, it will be money well spent. Because I can tell you, when you are in the heat of the moment, or if you pull up on something and get out of your car, the first thing you do may not be to cut that camera on. But we don't want a situation to where we have an incident and the cameras or the video is not available. Things do break, they do malfunction, but I do like the, basically the wireless or the Bluetooth type feature of both the taser and the sidearm, and that's something we're pursuing. But there is a cost, but we're trying to get it because I do think it would be worth everything.
Chief, I assume that with respect to the body cams, that the policy is that they cannot be turned off at any point? And if so, what sort of disciplinary actions would...
Well, they're not on 24 hours. Like, for example, if an officer was sitting here now, the camera's not on.
Correct.
But when he or she is dispatched to a call, they are cut on. When they get out of their vehicle and approaching and engaging, they are expected to be turned on and not turned off until the encounter is concluded. And the good thing about this, they cannot be tampered with or changed or modified at all. That's something that goes straight to evidence.com, and we have access. So they cannot, the officer who is doing the taping, the worst the officer can do is not turn on his or her camera, or to turn it off prematurely. And to your point, ma'am, if that was to be done, they would be coached up, counseled, and disciplined if necessary. Any other questions about that before moving on? I'm going to kind of go a little bit out of sequence to talk about Campaign Zero. Campaign Zero bases a brainchild that developed in late 2015, 2016 by some activists, protesters, and researchers associated with Black Lives Matters. And basically, they listed 10 areas of focus. And just recently, and as you can see, number three is the limited use of force. That's been at the forefront of some of their thoughts going back some time. Next slide, please. Campaign Zero has not necessarily morphed, but has grown into basically hashtag #8Can'tWait, which started June 3rd of this year. It was launched just last week, and it was pretty much as a result of, again, another in custody death. To give you a moment just to glance at that. The main focus of hashtag #8Can'tWait are the following. They require de-escalation training, which I'm proud to say we do, has a use of force continuum, which we do have, ban chokeholds, which we do, requires warning shots before shooting, that's not always a possibility, restrict shooting at moving vehicles or from moving vehicles, and we do have a policy that does address that. We do not suggest shooting at or from, but a situation may dictate that that may occur. One example I can think of, real life, prior to coming here, two officers were approaching a business where a robbery was in progress, subject come out firing, and the only thing that kept those officers from being killed was that the trainee sitting in the passenger seat did five rounds to protect him and his partner till they were able to move in a position of safety. So it's not an absolute, but we do, within our policy, try to limit or restrict the shooting at or from moving vehicles. It requires all exhaust, or exhaust all means before shooting. Yes, we have a use of force continuum, and it's one of those things that's progressive in nature, but again, if you arrive at a scene and there is already firing underway, or there's something where you may have to escalate up to that level of force. But there is a use of force continuum, or response to resistance. Due to intervene, again, even I tell my officers, if you see Chief getting in the weeds, get ready to make an error in judgment, I expect them to tap me on my shoulder to intervene and get me on the right path. So that is something that we teach and that we expect of each and every one of our officers. And requires comprehensive reporting. Being a CLIA accredited agency, documentation is key. Reporting, having that documentation by us, but also reporting to state or federal entities is also extremely important, so that that information can be shared with the citizenry and the public.
Chief, before you go there, I see no chokehold, we ban chokeholds.
Yes, we do not.
What about these leads and...
No, hard hand techniques or strikes can and are employed in an appropriate circumstance, but again, not to the head or neck or to the groin, but common peroneal strikes to the thigh or whatever to get someone to comply or to get under control has been considered a proper defensive technique. But only time that there are blows of any type going to the neck or head or groin area is on deadly force situation. And in this most recent incident, there was no evidence that that had occurred. But you have to be able to articulate that it was deadly force before those type of techniques or any type of strike or blow by any means to the head, neck, or groin is utilized.
Chief, just, so in addition to our officers being equipped with all body cams, do they all also have tasers?
Yes, ma'am. We do have less than lethal, and I'll discuss that a little bit more about some of the other tools we have, such as the OC spray, things that where we hope to cause the least amount of physical harm to gain control. So we do have less than lethal taser and OC spray. Basically, they interviewed or basically polled 100 of the largest cities in the U.S. to gather their data, and I think 91 of those responded. And this is some of the information that they gleaned. They indicated that they had, that those departments that adopted the use of force policies, that they recommended these areas significantly kill few people. So again, this is somewhat self-explanatory, but less than 25%, you know, dealt with exhaust and all alternatives before shooting, acquiring use of force, and so on, so on. So you can see that there's still some more work to be done to get more people to maybe adopt some of the recommendations that they have made to reduce the number of kills. Okay. As I mentioned before, being an accredited agency, and I want to finish up talking about accreditation, because I hopefully would give a greater level of comfort and confidence to our citizenry, and also those of us inside of this, we're reminded of how much we have to do to, again, try to obtain police excellence. But one of the main things that is required is having general orders or written directives. And we have a policy purpose, and that's why I stated that before you, that the purpose of our policy is to provide Spartanburg Police Department employees with guidelines on the response to resistance or aggression as approved by our department. And the policy statement is, basically, we use appropriate response to situations to attain lawful objectives. Employees of the department will use only the objectively reasonable response necessary to control a situation affecting arrest, overcome resistance to arrest, or defend him or herself from harm. Human life is immaterial in our society. Spartanburg Police Department personnel have been delegated the responsibility to protect life and property and apprehend criminal offenders. The apprehension of criminal offenders and the protection of property must at all times be secondary to the protection of life, however. Employee's responsibility for taking life includes his and her own. When we have a response to resistance, it's necessary that the level of force employed should be in direct relationship to the amount of resistance that we're receiving, and we're noting the imminent threat that a person is posing to us or some other employee or some citizen. Employees must weigh the circumstances of each individual case and employ only the response to that resistance or aggression, which is reasonable and necessary to control the situation. No employee will use unreasonable or excessive responses to resistance or aggression on any person. The response to resistance or aggression by the Spartanburg Police Department will, whenever possible, be progressive in nature. And what I mean by being progressive in nature, when a police officer comes up to the scene, there's various levels. When we roll, you have your presence. Next to presence, there are verbal commands, or use your voice. Then there are soft hand techniques, just simply applying cuffs or using some type of hold to get someone to comply, like a pressure point. Then you have the OC spray or the pepper spray that is commonly known as to use if appropriate. And then you have the CEW, or the Conducted Electrical Weapon, better known as Taser, which is really just a brand, but we label all of those as Taser. And then there's more of the hard hand techniques, as we talked before, whether it's some type of strike with the hand, elbow, knee, what have you. And then the impact weapons, which is like the baton. And the last thing, obviously, after the impact weapon, is the deadly weapon, you say your sidearm. So that's the, those are the different levels of force, and depending on the compliance, non-compliance, and the resistance and aggressiveness will depend on which one of these techniques will be used. Fortunately, most of the time, our mere presence and voice commands resolve, overwhelm a majority of situations, but you do have these other tools at your disposal to gain control of Some of our less than lethal, as we mentioned before, we do issue AS batons, straight baton, they're collapsible batons. We also have the OC spray, and we have the CEWs, which are Axons. Again, it talks about an exigent circumstances. Again, if it goes deadly force, you are fighting for your life to defend yourself or a third party, you may use other items that you have available to you. Radio, flashlight, stick as a less than lethal option. And we also, and you've seen some of these deployed here recently by other municipalities, other agencies, doing some of the demonstrations where they've employed bean bags, rubber rounds. We do have those, and there are others out there, pepper balls and what have you, but we do presently have some bean bag and rubber ball rounds for less than lethal options.
We have yet to use any of the bean bags.
We have not used any of that. We, again, I really just commend our officers for using tremendous restraint, being reserved, being resilient, but more importantly, being respectful to those who are demonstrating in our city right now. Less than lethal weapons, other than a firearm used necessarily, basically, the definition is some weapon, other than a firearm, used to affect a safer transition of an aggressive or resistant subject into custody, and they're also used to defend an employee from harm. They are designed to temporarily incapacitate a subject in order to gain control or control with no lasting after effects. And same can be said for less than lethal munitions, they're designed to incapacitate without causing death or any great bodily harm. Levels of control. As I mentioned before, this just gives you a little more detail, where it talks about your physical presence, and also talks about your verbal dialogue and your commands. As I said before, these two generally in and of themselves tend to resolve most situations, especially with the type of people we hire and the training they receive, even how to de-escalate and deal with conflict and have conflict resolution. Soft hand technique, as I mentioned to you before, pressure points, take down, joint manipulation, or taking hold of a subject. These are soft hand techniques. Doleo Reston Capsicum, which is OC or pepper spray, is also used, and it has an effect. The pepper is a natural oil, natural pepper, again, generally no lasting effect. It's uncomfortable, to be totally honest with you, if you don't want it, but it is an effective tool. Same can be said for the CEW, less than lethal option force. We are authorized to use this tool. It uses compressed air to fire two probes, detachable cartridge in front of the weapon. These probes do attach, they do attach to some electrical insulated light cage wire, and once fired, these probes attach to the socket. And they generally run a five-second charge or less if it is cut off, but it normally runs five seconds. Hard hand, empty control techniques, again, knee strike, elbow strikes, punches, kicks, control strikes are used to get a subject under control. Defensive strikes are used when an officer is being attacked. Levels of control weapon strikes, again, non-deadly impact weapons, we're again talking about our batons, and they're used to get a subject under control. The common peroneal, as I said, is basically the nerve center in the sides of your thigh, that once it's struck, it generally causes the person to break down or lose balance, you're able to get control. And deadly force, it speaks for itself unfortunately, but that generally involves the use of a sidearm, but that is not the only thing that can cause a deadly force, but that's what it's referring to.
Can you hear that?
I'm sorry.
Is it just deadly force?
Deadly force is when there's imminent threat of deadly force or imminent harm to you, to yourself, or to a third party.
So Spartanburg City is justified to use deadly force?
Yes, we are justified to use deadly force when there's imminent threat of danger to, if someone was to come in here now, sir, imposing a threat to you, or come up here an active shooter, we have the authority to meet that person with deadly force to defend ourselves or a third party. That is the standard, that what we consider reasonable. The response continuum is not designed to build step-by-step progression, as I mentioned before. Depending on the situation, when you arrive and you make an assessment, you may have to go to another level of the, obviously, you're there, so the presence piece is there, and the verbal piece is there, but you may have to go to another level depending on what the situation is. Therefore, escalation and de-escalation by the officer, employee, or the subject may not be sequential. More than one level of response may be appropriate for a particular level of resistance depending on the circumstance. And the response continuum is a model, demonstrated in escalating levels of control, use to compel compliance. Control responses are to be based on the subject's actions, the officer's perception of the threat, and officer's knowledge of his or her own abilities. And the key thing there is the subject's actions, that we're looking at behavior and conduct and the threat that it poses. That is the chart. You'll notice, you'll have, basically, to your right, what the subject is doing up there in that call, where it talks about non-verbal, non-compliance, passive resistance, defensive resistance, aggressive, active aggression, and aggravated active aggression. And then you'll see the responses that's down, that's vertically written there. Everything from professional presence, talks about the verbal, soft hand, OC spray, Conducted Electrical Weapon. You can see where the shaded blocks are to you what generally the response is for the level of resistance that the subject is exhibiting at that time. As you can see, for aggravated active aggression, that will be the only time where it will rise to the level of deadly force. Police officers may use deadly force to prevent escape of a fleeing fellow when the officer has probable cause to believe the subject will pose a significant threat to human life should the felon escape. Restrictions, officers should not discharge a firearm at or from a moving motor vehicle except when all other means have been exhausted, and I touched on that a little earlier in the scenario I provided. And the risk to innocent bystanders, firearms shall not be discharged when it appears reasonably likely that an innocent person may be injured. Again, another example is, if my backdrop is, there's innocent people behind someone who's posing a threat to me, if I get a shot and miss, or if I say through and through wound, and I may hurt someone else, I may cannot take that shot, despite having the authority to do so.
Couldn't that same argument be made for moving vehicles?
Yes. Yeah, as I said, our policy is, it is strongly discouraged to shoot at or from a moving vehicle, but in situations I described before, if I'm in my car and I'm taking fire, to defend myself or a third party, I will fire from my vehicle. It's not an absolute. But you want to, but you do have to be mindful of your backdrop when you're using a firearm. And that is true in either case.
Do we have any policies, I believe there may be some like it across the country, where if a particular situation escalates, such as, you know, shooting from a moving vehicle, where you are supposed to stop the pursuit in order to protect the public?
Well, in a pursuit policy, at any point during a pursuit, even if you're not shooting, just driving, if the pursuit becomes more dangerous to the public than it is to make that apprehension, it is expected to be called off. That officers to stop him or herself or supervisor monitoring the pursuit can discontinue the chase once it becomes too dangerous for the situation at hand. I may be pursuing someone coming down Pine Street, but as we approach the school zone or something along those lines, you would terminate the chase, especially if it's 2:00 in the afternoon or right at school time. You would not chase at that particular time. There's a number of factors that go into play, and that would be, again, that's true even before there's any, say, any gunplay from a vehicle, which happens very infrequently, to be totally honest. The risk to innocent bystanders, firearms should not be discharged when it appears likely that an innocent person may be injured, as I alluded to. And warning shots, officers may not discharge their firearm for the purpose of firing a warning shot. That's television, but there have been some jurisdictions that obviously did that back in time, but we do not here. Because once a round goes out, that gun, it falls somewhere. So you do not do warning shots. Response to resistance aggression review form. Anytime we have anything above a soft hand, just hold, apply cuffs, escort someone to a car, we do a response to resistance aggression review form. We do so when an injury results or even is alleged as a result of a deploy, control, response technique. When control is utilized and falls above soft, empty hands, as I said on the continuum, we will fill out this form. And when an officer points, even if an officer points his CEW or a weapon, or even a sidearm, it's still documented in the report and this form is completed, even if it's not utilized. And when an officer points a firearm, as noted below, we definitely do note it in the report, in our incident report and in this form.
And is that report reviewed, so when you all, if an incident report were to have to be completed, are you comparing that also to what is seen on the body cam?
Right. All of those comprise the report. Yes, ma'am.
That sometimes the reports are very different from what is actually seen.
And that's the beauty of it all, that we have the incident report that the officer's written, we also have the response to resistance form that's completed by the supervisor, and we do have the body cam. And we make sure all these things mirror up, and see if there's any disparity, we will see it. Next slide, please. And again, kind of what we're going through the process here, we do, it is, both of these forms are completed and submitted to the officer's immediate supervisor or watch commander for review at the end of the shift, and after they review it, they'll sign it and make note of their findings, involved incident, including additional comments, and then a copy of the incident report, response to resistance, anything associated with it, including the body worn, is forwarded to us, to the deputy chief, the captain, OPSI, and the training coordinator. Photographs, one thing, if there's someone that is injured, photographs of the injuries are taken and documented and also added to the report. Rending aid. It is the duty of each employee to render or arrange for the immediate, appropriate, and necessary medical aid for any person when a response to resistance or aggression results in injury. Once the scene is made safe, such aid shall be rendered without delay, and employee utilizing control shall notify his or her immediate supervisor. This will be whether we OC'd someone, tased someone, shot someone, we still render aid. All subjects that are exposed as a Conducted Electrical Weapon, OC spray shall be transported to Spartanburg Regional Medical Center before being transported to the detention center. The subject shall be observed by departmental personnel for 30 minutes. Relief from duty. When actions or response of any employee in an official capacity results in a death or serious physical injury, that officer or employee will, as soon as practical, be placed on administrative leave by the supervisor pending a full investigation into the incident by the department. This is administrative leave of pay. This leave will continue until terminated by the chief of police following an administrative review of the incident. And again, back to training, all officers shall be issued a copy of this general order, receive instructions on this content, proud to be an authorized carrier of firearm or less than lethal weapon and munitions, and receive annual in-service training. And this is what we do with our weapon systems. Okay, ma'am? If you could, would you go back to, one thing I want to share with you right here at the end, if you go back to the very beginning, if you don't mind, where it talks about accreditation, and I won't, I would just, just won't say this, I won't go all through it, other than to say, could you go back to this, yeah, back a little further, the first, very first slide if you see it. I'll tell you what, I'll just give you this without it, if it's not on there. As I said before, we are an accredited agency, and we're very proud of that fact, and we're double accredited. And what I mean by accredited is the four major law enforcement entities, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Sheriff's Association, and PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum, have come up with the best practices and highest standards there is in law enforcement. There you go, ma'am. I'm getting to there. And it's one of those things where CLIA is the national standard, that's the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, that these four entities represent and certify. And there's two levels of accreditation. There's level or tier one, which has 182 standards to be met, and there's tier two for advanced law enforcement accreditation, which has or is composed of 460 standards. We are a tier two accredited agency, which means there are 460 standards that we have to make sure that we meet and maintain, and we're reviewed every three years by the accrediting One of the things that they require, as I mentioned to you before, you got to develop a comprehensive, well-thought-out uniform set of written directives. This is one of the most successful methods of reaching administrative and operational goals, which also provide direction to personnel. CLIA also... CLIA also mandates that we provide a necessary reports and analysis, that the CEO needs to make fact-based, uh, and informed management decisions. And we also have a preparedness program that we have to have put in place that will deal with any natural man-made disaster or unusual occurrence. And CLIA accreditation is also a means for developing and improving upon an agency relationship with the community because it calls for so much community involvement and community-oriented policing. The, the three main benefits, accreditation strengthens an agency's accountability, both within the agency and the community, through a continuum of standards that clearly define authority, performance, and responsibility. And being CLIA accredited can limit an agency's liability and risk exposure because it demonstrates the intentional, intentionally recognized standards for law enforcement have been met as verified by a team of independent, outside, CLIA-trained assessors. They actually view our, a lot of our records remotely, but they do come on site, and they make sure that what we have written that we do. CLIA accreditation facilitates, uh, I'm sorry, uh, facilitates an agency's pursuit of professional excellence. This is the part I want to leave you with, and there's a point of pride. There are seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five law enforcement agencies in the United States. And if you just count police and sheriffs, it's fifteen thousand four hundred. There's only eleven hundred forty-eight that are accredited, and we're one of them, and we have been since nineteen ninety-nine. And as you can see in the state of South Carolina, we have two hundred and seventy-nine law enforcement agencies, including twenty-three police, forty-six sheriffs. And out of South Carolina, there are those that are CLIA accredited, the national accreditation is thirty-six. So I hope the city is proud of the fact that we spend the money and the time. I think a lot of people are not accredited because it is labor-intensive and it is costly, but I think it's worth every penny because it's ensuring that we're meeting the highest, highest standards there is in law enforcement and, and using a lot of the best practices. So, again, a point of pride for us, and as I said, we're doubly accredited. We're also accredited by the South Carolina Accrediting Agency as well. And so unless there are no other questions, I will conclude.
Yeah, Chief, um, I have a question, and then I would like to make a statement.
Yes, ma'am.
I am hearing a lot and I am reading a lot about the defunding of the police. So what is your thought on that?
I think the defunding and the, I'll put it like this, there's a lot of agencies or entities that provide services that have funding cut, and we end up being the agency, have to deal with all of it. So further couldn't our funds wouldn't be of help to anyone, to be totally honest with you. I think that the funding and the, uh, dissolving of law enforcement agencies, I'm, I'm trying to think what that looks like, to be totally honest with you. I don't know if we'd get many takers, uh, many counselors or to go into a domestic disturbance call where you have folks engage in an argument. And, you know, right now, we're trained with de-escalating and separating, and we have those resources available to us, victim advocates, counselors, uh, that we can call to the scene to help resolve the situation. But to go into, we lose, with traffic stops, domestic violence, and warrant services tend to be consistently the three type situations where we lose our lives more frequently each year. So to send people who do not have our training nor our equipment to go into a domestic disturbance, for example, to me, I don't, do not know if that would be the best course of action to take. I, I understand right now, a lot of legislative bodies at the federal, state, and local levels want to do something. But I'm, I'm fearful that there will be these hard lurches or knee-jerk reactions, but hopefully the pendulum will swing to where we find some reasonableness. But I think it's so important, and President Obama said this, what we're doing here today, and, and hopefully these discussions will continue if we need further clarity on some things or explanation. Each community need to assess their law enforcement agency and see if that agency's doing what needs to be done in their community. Just like I, it's frustrating to be, you know, swept with the same broad brush for inappropriate conduct when I know how much we try to do, uh, to make sure you can go home and rest comfortably in your beds at night, and go shop, and then to the movies and eat in relatively safety and calm. And that happens because of my people, your people, our people, our police. We're not perfect, uh, and, but I said it before, I think ninety-nine percent of us get up each and every day, try to do things the right way, at the right reason, at the right time. But those, even the good officers who make a bad mistake, or some people who should never be in our ranks, make it hard on all of us, make a difficult job more difficult. But I, I still say that I'm extremely proud of the folks here, uh, in law enforcement, not just here, but definitely here, because I know what we do here. But I know that they, despite the, the name-calling and, um, other negative things that come their way, whether it's on Facebook and whatever else, um, I just know when people dial nine-one-one, we're still coming. And we're going to provide the best service we possibly can, and I thank them for that. This community does too.
What do you actually mean when you say defund?
I'm sorry, when they say defund, I'm hearing, uh, and, and again, some of those, uh, that's recommended that...
What do they actually mean when you say defund?
Basically, take money away from the police and divert to, say, some other entity, either within city government or someone in the, um, say, some other, say, I don't know, I wouldn't say nonprofit, but potentially who can, what they think can provide a similar service that we can. So that's one of the things that I've heard today. I'm still kind of getting my head wrapped around some of the defunding and dissolving kind of issues myself. I hope that that doesn't happen here in our city. I don't think we've been that bad. Actually, I think we tried to do a pretty good job. But, but that's, that's what it means, sir. Basically, um, some of it has been taking money to divert to some other programs. I know in Los Angeles, for example, they was talking about taking several million, like two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, or they got a LAPD's budget to put into some programs in certain communities, uh, whether it was healthcare, education, some of those types of things that they think can address some social ills there. But there's some right now that are just so frustrated with law enforcement, and I understand, I mean, uh, to some extent. A great deal, like I said, the situation with, uh, in Minneapolis, like I said, sickling, and it got me feeling some kind of way because it was wrong. But I still say that there are folks who answer the call of public service in the field of law enforcement. They do a tremendous job in the communities that they serve. And we need to make sure, though, that we are engaging our community in the way that we're providing the type of service they want to have. And, um, and that's what we would do here. I welcome, uh, community engagement and feedback. That's one of the things about the CLIA accreditation. When they come, they do surveys, they check with the public, uh, the businesses, and basically ask how we, how we're doing. And I think that's powerful, and generally the feedback we get is very, very good. So, again, we, you know, it's one of those things we, uh, I don't mind inspecting because I operate under the belief you don't get what you expect, you get what you inspect. So I don't mind being inspected for the job that we've done because I think at the light of day, uh, we'll, we'll pass the test. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Chief, I have seen, uh, horrible sights on television, bad cops, and I am very, very disturbed about all of the things that I am seeing. However, I will say that I moved back to Spartanburg in two thousand seven. During that time, God Fisher was the chief, and then you came on, and you were both blessed to have...
Oh, no doubt.
Jennifer Kendall.
Oh, yeah.
As your deputy chief, because she's just a wonderful person. I have never heard of the violence and stuff I am seeing and hearing throughout the country in this city. I have never, maybe there has been something else to take place, and I am not aware of it. But I think that when you have good leadership, that makes all the difference in the world. We have had great later leadership here in the city of Spartanburg, and I am blessed. The only complaint that I have, though, we don't see you enough sometimes in the community. I mean, that's the only complaint that I have. But, uh, though we are blessed and I am grateful for DC Kendall, as I call her, for being your deputy chief.
Most, most definitely. I've said many a time in many a venue that I'm extremely blessed to be the police chief here in the city, and it's because of two things. The people that wear the uniforms in that building, they're, they're the councilman professionals. My work wife, Deputy Chief Kendall, she's, uh, no, my apologies to Mr. Kendall, but, uh, but, but, uh...
She wants a divorce.
She is, uh, fantastic, second to none, but it goes all the way down. Uh, I do think the leadership is good, but we, the biggest thing we do, though, is try to screen and hire good people and try to do things the Spartanburg way. And, um, and we built on, to, to your point, uh, I didn't find anything broken here, but I've tried not to mess it up and to build on it if I could, uh, to make us even more responsive, uh, to the community, and they've responded. We've responded together, I think, extremely well up to this point, but we, we're never resting on laurels and keep on trying to improve the performance and the service that we deliver.
Chief, um, w- we appreciate you on a daily basis, but, but never more so in, in times like this. The, the tension, especially as it relates to the tension between the community at large, portions of our community and, and our law enforcement. And, uh, you know, I think the tone that's been set from, from your leadership all the way down has, has been really an inspiration, I think, for, for, for the country and, and a model for the country. One of the comments that was made earlier referenced community-based policing. Uh, and I know that's an approach that's near and dear to your heart as well as, as your team. Can you talk about community-based approaching, about community-based, uh, policing on a, on a daily basis and the value of that approach, but also at times like this?
Well, it's just like when I went before Congress a couple of years ago, almost three years ago now, in fact. It's what you do during non-contemptious times, when we're not investigating a crime, we're not investigating a record, serving a warrant. It's getting out that car and meeting people where they are and forming relationships. Because at the end of the day, that's what matters, where people start to somewhat trust you. And, um, and they realize you're not just someone to come in and, as I like to say, rain pain, which, you know, when you're arresting people and all the stuff, it, it seems bad. But it's, it's, it's when you, when you show that you're in it, you're committed to doing things in a positive and a proactive way to address issues that they have, not just criminal issue, but quality of life issues as well, as, as well. And, and I will say this, I mentioned the one thing that, uh, the reason I think that things are going well for us here. One is because of our law enforcement, but also about the community. I tell you, I really do believe Spartanburg is a special place. We got problems, the same problems everyone has had, but we deal with them differently. And the fact that, you know, I appeal to, you know, we had the brief carefree there because things were getting out of hand, we were acting like Spartanburg, like, and some of that because a lot of people were not from Spartanburg, uh, that happened to be here. But we have a community that I think because of some of the goodwill that has been built up that's in that bank that we're able to tap into right now, because we have tried to be fair in our dealings with people. We're cashing some of that in now. But I'm hoping that we're adding to it because of the approach that we have. Again, the, the folks that are protesting, even no matter how badly they act out, they're not enemy combatants. They are fellow citizens who have a right to protest. But the word is peaceably assembled and to have your agreements redressed. But even when they get a little, uh, a wee, uh, my fellow brothers and sisters that are, as I said, feeling some kind of way about this, as they should, uh, I still respect the right to do it. But by the same token, as I mentioned before, but I still, we, we as an entity cannot allow them to harm other people, though, and, and have their rights violated. So it, it's, it's definitely a threat and a need of proposition. But I think it's, I have, we have great staff at the PD, great support from, uh, you, Mr. Mayor and council. But I also really appreciate the citizens of our city who live here, who I think really do buy into it, and at least I hope they do that. Again, let's not, let's not go down the same path everyone else go. Let's make our own path and our own destination and get there, and then we'll leave some breadcrumbs so they can follow if they want to. But I still say we can be that city on a hill that can show people how to do it right. We can be, it's one of those things for us to make the difference. It's going to take some change, because I'm telling you, we, we, America's the greatest country in the world, but we still got a ways to go. We got to be, we got to be comfortable being uncomfortable. And not only just having some tough conversations, but taking some stiff actions. But if there's one place that I have the utmost confidence that it'll get done, it's right here.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, um, Chief, thank you again for your leadership this week and for your personal help to me earlier this week.
I hear that saying from you, ma'am.
Question on kind of where do we go from here? This is such helpful information. I don't know if anybody else has received emails or calls about defunding the police, disbanding our departments. This is really helpful talking points for us to have. Um, and I think people are hungry right now to hear from you and to hear from your department and to be reassured that we're already doing a lot of those eight can't wait. So what, what in your mind, and maybe Chris too, is next for us? How do we get this information out to, to the rest of our citizens? Are we looking at any kind of public forum, or what do you see happening next?
Well, I think that's, you know, I guess we have to get our heads wrapped around it, what that looks like. Because sometimes I hear questions, and, and I love them when people come and they talk and they ask and they present things, but in, in this, I really like it when I know what we're doing, jarred up. It is disappointing that they don't know what we're doing. But we, we're so busy, to be totally honest with you, of trying to provide the service and do what I do. We don't stop and blow our horn or be patting ourselves on the back saying, "We're doing that." We just try to go about the business of doing it. Uh, but we do maybe have to come up, uh, with a better way of sharing what we do do while acknowledging there's some other things we can do. So, uh, one thing I do encourage people to do, come to council. I encourage them to come to the Citizens Police Academy. I encourage ride-alongs, because I think that's where you can really get educated and enlightened, but also finding that's where we're getting enlightened too. Uh, we learn as much from the citizens' academies as we probably teach. I tell people, please, come and spend time with your police department. That is the key. We're not something else. We are your police department. And as citizens realize that, and they can come down, we'll share with them. We spent, uh, there was three young men that me and two of my command staff spent two hours with the other day. Uh, one of them I know for sure. I didn't recognize the two others, but I'm gonna recognize one in, uh, in one of the protests that got a little rowdy. But, but again, we entertain it, we, we ask, we answer their questions. Matter of fact, it's like on a two-hour podcast, so we did it live, but we had a very open, heartfelt conversation and addressed every question that they asked. Probably told them what they wanted to hear. But, uh, but I think just having those, being accessible, uh, being committed, being sincere and genuine in our effort and wanting to help, I think that makes a lot of difference. But how we can get all that information out other than just by our actions, and hopefully, more than anything we can say, I'm hoping that the actions of the Spartanburg Police Department during one of these most turbulent and unprecedented times, hopefully that speaks for us more than anything I could ever say.
We want to thank you for the outstanding job you're doing for us, you and your whole staff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.